Assalamualaikum wr wb and a very good afternoon to everyone. Welcome back from that short break. You are participating in this virtual conference today, improving access to cancer treatment and care. It's day two and we are at a special session to discuss about surviving cancer and how can we do better? This is a special session, ladies gentlemen, simply because this is at the heart of the issue here about talking about surviving cancer. And I am delighted to introduce the chair for the session that will be starting shortly. And that is YB Nurul Isar Anwar, who is a member of parliament for Pramathampau. She is also the Removing Obstacles for Civical Screening on the Rose Foundation Ambassador, something of which I did not know and I'm delighted to find out. The Young Cancer Survivors Group by the National Cancer Society of Malaysia, NCSM, was actually launched by YB Nurul Isar a few years ago, I think. And she holds a belief that there is currently a lack of disease awareness and the constant struggle to earn a living, often details women from undergoing health screening. So we're very fortunate to have her. I'm sure she has a busy schedule, but I will now ask her to chair the session. Over to you, YB.
Assalamualaikum wr wb. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much, Azro, for the kind introduction. You know, I feel very, very delighted and of course honored to be part of this conference, especially speaking to the experts, you know, Ms. Ranjit Kaur and Datin Dayang. Before, you know, I move on further, I think this topic of surviving cancer survivorship is very crucial for us. And if you, those in the audience who've had the chance to read Galen's paper, it's quite important to look into greater detail the National Strategy Plan for Cancer Control Programme between 2016 to 2020. And I think in Malaysia with COVID affecting all of us, cancer has been sidelined and it's a really crucial opportunity to bring it back to the table, considering that it's going to affect at least one out of 27 women in Malaysia. So, you know, without further ado, allow me to introduce our panelists. We have Ms. Ranjit Kaur, who's the president of the Breast Cancer Welfare Association. She's a survivor, cancer survivor, and has begun her journey as a volunteer and, you know, helped organize the third annual Southeast Asia Breast Cancer Symposium in Kuching at the time in 2018, if I'm not mistaken. And she's also a trained therapist. She holds a master's degree in Community Disability Studies from University College of London. You know, it's really wonderful to, you know, have you here with us. And of course, our second panelist, which I will introduce later. Sorry, Azro, I have not been a chair for a long, long time. And maybe I will ask Ranjit to sort of share with us one of the key things I believe all of us should understand or learn to understand better, speaking from my own experience. You know, I'd like to know more. When you talk about survivorship, what is it actually? And I just finished Multi-Dimensional Poverty Index. So we're looking at poverty and we see different dimensions. But as we celebrate breast cancer awareness this month, could you share with us what does survivorship mean to you? And what are the dimensions, the key dimensions, that we could use in measuring the level of success or lack thereof in survivorship? Over to you, Ranjit.
Thank you, YB Nurul, for that introduction and also for explaining about the issue of survivorship. I think one of the things that we face when we get breast cancer or even any form of cancer is the fact that we don't know what's going to happen to us. There's so much uncertainty about the whole thing that you go through in a very sort of, you really don't know what you're going through. You're just facing the doctors. You're going for treatment. And then suddenly, everything stops. The treatment is over. And you wonder what's happened now, you know? Am I safe enough? I'm not seeing doctors often. But at the same time, you want to celebrate that treatment is over. I don't have to suffer these side effects. And now let me do what I want to do, you know? I think survivorship to me would be something that is to do with your quality of life. How are you going to live your life? What are the parameters of your life itself after the cancer treatment is over? During the cancer treatment, most of the time when we have communication with the healthcare professionals, they usually will tell us, okay, finish your treatment and after that you can do what you like. Because most of the time you get patients saying, what should I stay away from? What should I do? You get a lot of news and information from other sources that say that you should have this pantang or that kind of a lifestyle during treatment and even after treatment. So I think it is a learning experience. Survivorship to us is a learning experience. You finish your treatment and you get thrown into the deep end and say, okay, now get on with your life. I think there needs to be a survivorship coping sort of like coaching situation where they're coached into how to live life after that. You get a bit of information from healthcare providers. You get a bit of information from your peers who have gone through it. You get a bit of information from other resources like the social media and everything else. And then you try to put things together. But I think it would be good to have a module of survivors, like in an organization like Breast Cancer Welfare Association Malaysia, we try and have sessions. We try and have talks. We have experts who come and give talks, which could be on the area of psychological, physical and other areas of life, even if it is to do with work and what you want to do with your life, your family, you want to have children, you want to have a family after that. All these things are hard and possible.
What are the options available to you?
Absolutely, yes.
I think, I mean, that's really crucial because it's like exploring the unknown, you know, especially with something so staggering, you know, life-changing. And you see that many people actually fall under the trap of poverty after they've been diagnosed with cancer because of the escalating costs. Thank you, thank you for that, Ms. Ranjit. And, you know, I'm going to move on to our second panelist before I continue the questions. And feel free to jump in, even though Galen has set up quite a strict procedure. You have to key in and place your questions. But, you know, bear with me. So Datin Dayang Mariani Abang Zain, yeah, our second panelist, who's an advisor for the Society for Cancer Awareness and advocacy Kuching scan. You know, she's also a cancer survivor. She's a caregiver. And she has been a very strong advocate for survivors everywhere. And right now, president also of the Special Olympics for Kuching chapter. So, you know, Datin Dayang, you know, there's a clear divide between what is available in terms of medical services for cancer survivors in the urban centers versus the rural hinterland. And this was highlighted in the National Strategy Plan for Cancer Control Programme. I would like to know, and from your experience, what are the key challenges when you're dealing with, you know, providing care, getting the support, accessibility in Srawa, especially in the rural areas? And what do you think could be done to change these things? Please, Datin Dayang. Sorry, I can't hear you. Can you turn on your microphone?
Oh, sorry.
I mean, I'm unmute. No, microphone, unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, louder here.
Okay, thank you very much. Assalamualaikum wr wb. Thank you for having me today. Okay, yes, I'm a survivor. And because being a survivor, you learn to have your empathy through your own experience. And it is even more challenging for us in Srawa because, as you know, Srawa is a very vast state, you know? Good and well, if you're in the city. But again, even in Kuching itself, the whole of Srawa has only about five oncologists, for example, to serve the whole of Srawa, yeah? And three in private, five in the SGH. And on top of all these, okay? Like I said, we are a vast state and the terrain, logistic is the most difficult thing. Some live so far away. For example, I was on a plane from Sibut to Kuching. I met a lady who was sitting next to me and her eye was bulging. And I asked her where she's going. She said, I'm going to have, I'm going to see my doctor. I had been diagnosed with eye cancer. And she was telling me that she has to travel a day to come out from where her long house is and to go to Kanawe and run from Kanawe to Sibut another day. And then it takes another flight to come to Kuching. So that's the reason why a lot of cancer is late presentation because of the locality of all these people around in Srawa. And it does make it even harder that, like I said, Kuching is the only place that has all the facilities. And radiotherapy, for example, is only in Kuching. So you can imagine that if you have 33 cycles of radiotherapy, you have to leave in Kuching. If you are from Limbanglawas, you have to leave in Kuching. Sometimes we do have places for them to stay, but for them to stay a month away from home, you know, loss of income. They cannot come alone. It has to be both two-person usually, you see? So it is very, very difficult in that sense, yeah? And because of lack of, we have doctors, yes. We have lots of doctors in the hospital. But people that are specialized in the various, you know, area are very limited. So everything has to be done in Kuching. And on top of that, the difficulties is again, our doctors, okay? Either you speak Bahasa, you speak Mandarin, okay? Nobody speaks locally, even locals around.
Language barriers.
So there is a barrier. And let, not only Srawa Malay, let alone all the different ethnic languages. So a lot of things are lost in translation. And the fear of, to give you an example, I brought a lady who speaks very little Bahasa. And she wanted me to be there with her. She's not my relative, she's a friend. So the first thing the doctor asked me is that, why are you here? You know, I said, well, she doesn't speak Bahasa very well and she doesn't speak English. So the doctor turned around and asked me and said, hey, but she, but per taun, da duduk dekam Malaysia, tak boleh cakap lai you ke? You know? And that made her intimidated. Do you think that this kind of person would want to come back to the hospital? But the thing is that because I was there and hold her hand and said, look, and I translate it into Hokian to her in Srawa local Malay, you know? And slowly she opens up. So these things that we are facing in Srawa, yeah? And of course, cancer become a bit more difficult also is because we do have wrongly advised cancer patient. We have too many people who try to be doctors. We have too many people who pantang larang and said that, oh, my auntie just had chemo and she died. So the person will not go into chemo, you know? So it makes it even more difficult, yeah? More difficult. So that's why they started to go into traditional medicine. They do, they take all the supplements. Sometimes they spend hundreds, you know, even thousands of ring it on supplement, hoping that it will get away, but it will never get away. And another issue is that here, I don't know, maybe it's also there in Semenangjo that people are afraid that other people know that they have cancer. It looks as though that is like, as though cancer is contagious, you know? That they hide themselves. The more you hide, the more you refuse to be, you know, able to voice out. I think it's more stressful and it makes.
Taking time bomb.
Yes, yes, that's right, yeah. So these are the things that I can see over with us in Srawa. And of course, when you talk about the poor, the poverty level, yeah? It's another, of course, it's a wide spectrum. But here in Srawa, I think it's even more tougher. And also the literacy level.
Yeah.
Yeah, the literacy level. And they don't even know what it is, you know? So it makes it very, very difficult, yeah?
Thank you, thank you so much, Datin. I think that's a really pertinent point because even when you talk about trying to communicate with empathy, it's not just simply explaining to them. It's understanding their background. It's understanding their own feelings and their own, you know, concerns and fears. You know, I cited just now that one in every 27 Malaysian women will have breast cancer. And I think that's why, you know, one of the key campaigns that a lot of my colleagues and my friends, whether from Rose, have actually done is the Know Your Laments campaign. So we're actually trying to organize it on the 31st of October, especially in the rural areas of Srawa because women empowerment, where you feel more kind of confident and this is less of a taboo, you know, to just say, look, this is part of taking care of ourselves. And of course, one, like it or not, the manual that Ranjit suggested just now must be made available in every language for different groups because at the end of the day, we want to be able to communicate effectively. So I was also looking at what you said in terms of how many cancer specialists that we have, yeah? In Malaysia, it's about 3.6 radiotherapists and oncology experts per million population, whereas the global average is expected is 10 per million population. So, you know, we have a long way to go and most of them are situated in the private healthcare centers, as you know. Cancer care is very expensive. And these are the things that we have to take into account as we embark in the upcoming budget. Because, you know, by 20, you know, late 26th of October, we'll have our budget 2022. So I'd like to ask again, you know, Ms. Ranjit, what would be your wish list? You know, if there's like top three things you can ask for in terms of, you know, of course, specifically to the Ministry of Health, but more importantly in terms of cancer care? I think all of us are, you know, concur, even as COVID becomes endemic in our society, we must start shifting and looking at all the other diseases and then cancer must be re-prioritized. So that's my question to Ranjit. And of course, Datin Dayang, please weigh in later on. The top three asks is always important for policymakers to know. And I think it's also nice for people to realize the awareness before I ask Mr. Azro if he can open for Q and A. Please, Ms. Ranjit.
Thank you for that, YB. I think one of the things that I would ask for is that the patient, every patient who has cancer should have timely medical treatment. And I think that needs to be a time put to it. Diagnosis time and then the first treatment that sets up, that should be there. And that's where we're talking about manpower. We're talking about cost-related issues. And we are talking about, if we are not going to be able to reach that number of healthcare specialists in these fields, then there needs to be some kind of training to be given to medical officers or even a public-private partnership, where you have just mentioned just now that the number of specialists are more in the private sector than they are in the government sector. So there needs to be some kind of public-private partnership and there are examples of that in the country. So for me, on behalf of the patients, I want timely medical treatment, no long waiting list, no keeping them as people who are in elective treatment. Because as our patients are going, if I were one of the patients and I was on a waiting list during the pandemic, I'm being made to wait and my cancer is growing inside me. Now, that kind of anxiety is not what I want for patients. I want the patient to get full respect. Only then the patient will feel that I'm being taken care of in this country. So that's important for acute survivorship. Acute survivorship is diagnosis and treatment time and also at the same time managing side effects. The second one, of course, is extended survivorship. Extended will be after the initial treatment is over because there's some side effects that come in. And the third one will be permanent survivorship. I think when we have completed all our treatment, we continue to live life. But during that extended time of survivorship, there may be long-term side effects. Nobody's paying attention to long-term side effects. Now, there are things like osteoporosis setting in and things long-term that are going to cause more and more expenses for the government and for the patients itself. Because you get osteoporosis, you get fractures, you are going to be a burden for yourself, for your family, for the government as well. So can we do things that, where we can have funding put in for acute survivorship, timely diagnosis, timely medical treatment, whether you're going to do it by private-public partnership or you're going to do it by short-term training for medical officers so that they are there at hand to handle certain cancer cases? And the other one, of course, is, for me, it is, of course, the extended survivorship as well as the permanent survivorship. So these are the three areas I would like to pay attention to. And definitely, cancer has been, cancer patients have become like stepchildren of the government. We are not being paid attention to because of the pandemic. I'm sorry to say that, but we are seeing a lot of delayed cases right now and a lot of isolation and suffering. So we need to open our doors to make sure that all the patients are taken care of.
Okay, thank you so much. I think that that's pretty crucial. I was looking at the different countries and the waiting times respectively. And I think Taiwan has the lead here. They have about 27.8 days before you get a breast cancer diagnosis. And, you know, again, I'm going to pivot to another question, which has been asked by an anonymous attendee because it's linked to the whole, you know, getting staffers, getting medical frontliners to be more well-versed together in this effort because it requires a whole society approach. But the question is, do medical students need to attend communication courses on how to speak to patients? Is it part of their syllabus? When they become specialists, surgeons or oncologists and speak to newly diagnosed cancer patients? Now, I will just add a bit because, you know, I think when the hours are long, especially in public hospitals, you know, it's very difficult also for doctors and specialists to give the extra care because they're rushing from patient to patient. So there has to be sort of a symbiotic, a balance of which they can also give proper care, but also a more, you know, timely assessment that's given for them to do their work accordingly. So what are your thoughts with this, Ms. Ranjit? Take into account that our system is a little bit different. There have been recommendations on how we can sort of revamp and have better synergies. But, you know, just to hear from you in terms of what could be done to make sure, you know, we understand and we communicate with each other, patient and doctor, better.
I think, YB, one of the things that we see in communication skills through our experience as well as the experience of others is that most of the time, I mean, there is no doubt about it that healthcare providers have to learn the technical knowledge and technical skills. And at the end of the day, when they break bad news to the patient, they end up using technical language because they know no other because there isn't a proper put-in-place communication skills program for them. I think one of the ways also to have good communication programs that I've seen in other countries, of course, there are psychosocial or psycho-oncology experts who will teach how communication can be done better. But at the same time, in our country, we have a good resource. We have patients. We have survivors who actually can have sessions with medical students and doctors to tell their story or even to talk to them and say, look, I didn't understand this word when it was said to me. So maybe you can use a simpler language. And I remember, I remember very clearly when we were doing a video on navigation of patients in UMMC. I was the manager running that whole video program and Prof. Aisha was with me. And I remember at that time, I told the doctors, I said, look, I want the oncologists to write their script, the surgeons to write their script. And when it came to me, it was all technical language. And I said, do you think the patient understands? They said, yes, because the patient nods their head. Nodding their head.
They have no choice.
Understands. So I became the iron lady, the tough taskmaster. And I said, this language, this language has to be simplified. And it was simplified in English, in Bahasa and in Chinese. Even in Chinese, one doctor was using a different word for chemotherapy. The other doctor was using. So you need to standardize. Technical language is very easy to use and to speak. Simple language is very difficult. And that is why patients don't understand what the doctor is saying.
They're zoned out.
That's right. They're zoned out because they are having anxiety and issues of uncertainty. It's emotional, just like you mentioned. Okay, the doctor breaks the bad news and gives it in a simple communication way, which the patient understands. But like what Datin mentioned earlier is also to do with what language are you speaking to the patient? And is the patient able to make out what you're saying? If you're using Bahasa and this is a Teochew-speaking woman, she won't know what the hell you're talking about. And she has to bring a whole village along to understand what the doctor is saying. And sometimes, like Datin mentioned, it's lost in communication. At the same time, we also need psycho-oncologists to be stationed in the hospitals because with that anxiety, patients get just shut down, unable to take in more information than just the word she's got cancer. That's when the psycho-oncologist can sit down with the patient, go through the whole thing and the steps to use. There are many methods of communication skills which doctors could learn and have role plays and do that. And we are doing it in Breast Cancer Welfare Session. Some of the universities are allowing us to do that with year-three medical students.
Wonderful, wonderful. So there's already this existing collaboration.
That's right.
Wonderful. Because I think, as you mentioned earlier, it has to also involve the key agencies and ministries. We're talking about even prevention. There's LPPKN, there's Ministry of Health that does it, and there's also SOSSO. So, you know, and of course, Ministry of Higher Education, which PPM, UMMC falls under, you know, where I was born. And let's not go there. But the point is, you know, these are the, you know, I really believe that's really important. And thank you, thank you for sharing because sometimes doctors also need schooling and also, you know, patients also need schooling. It's a 260-degree process. Now, Datin Dayang, what are going to be your top three asks? Because I note that somebody in the audience also asked for a 30-year plan. And, you know, I mean, RMK 12 is five-year in nature. But I do believe we do allow for flexibilities. And the way I see it is more of, you know, predicting future challenges, future pandemics, you know, the zoonotic diseases haven't had their fair share. They're not done yet with us. So it's more maybe to predict what are the possible changes in future? And as I'm reading here, because, you know, what Prof. Aisha Thayt has said, we cannot achieve much in the five-year cancer control. It needs a phased approach and five years is not enough. So, I mean, I like that, you know, bearing in mind budgets are of course short-term interventions, but budgets should also plug in the longer-term understanding. I was really happy when Srawa State Government announced their constraining setting up a cancer center. That's what, you know, we've been asking for as well. And we're very excited because I think in Srawa is really a dire need. But again, how do you plug in the budget, right? At the federal level so that it kind of fits nicely into the long-term development? So your top three asks, bearing in mind these two short-term and super-long-term goals?
Okay, actually, when you talk about our wish list, it is very nice to hear them to say that, oh, we are going to have the hospital. I think this has been said a couple of times. We seeing is believing. We are yet to see, you see? Because actually, Scan, we have presented a paper actually for asking from YB Dr. Sim, yeah? For a cancer hospital. And even that we were saying that the, what do you call, the heart cancer, the heart center at the moment is, the building is quite huge. And if while waiting, they could, you know, make part of the the heart center at the moment. And if, if while waiting, they could, you know, make part of, uh, the, the heart center at the moment, to accommodate cancer, cancer patient. Because when you talk about building, building a hospital, it, it doesn't take, it is not just a year. It will take maybe two years, three years, you know? And, and the cancer patients keep piling up. Where we are at the moment, we were also cramped, the place is, uh, you know, if you're not sick, you get sicker going in there. What more to say, a person who's already sick, you know? So these are plans that we were hoping that, uh, both the federal government and the, the state government could probably look at it, you know? Temporarily put us there because they are, they are underused. The, the place is huge, you know? So, uh, probably that is the immediate shock then. Well, they can find it well if they can give us the hospital.
Yeah.
But like I said, it takes, uh, a much longer time, you know? And the other wish list that we really, really hope to see is that another radiotherapy center in Meri. Because right now it's only in Kuching. So you think of people in Limbanglawas coming down. So if you have one center, a radiotherapy center unit there, at least those in the northern region that do not have to come down to Kuching for the, you know, radiotherapy. That lessen the burden of, uh, logistic, you know? And, uh, of course, um, like Ranjit was talking about all this understanding of, uh, to make sure that we, we have, uh, not only when you come up from cancer and that's it, we want something else, you know? Uh, just to give you an example that I had, I personally had a very difficult journey through my cancer. And, uh, if I do not have all the resources, I probably will not be talking to you today. Yeah? And, uh, you know, my, my chemo pocket is large and I had blood clot and I had to be rushed to, to KL. Yeah? And, uh, from there, and then later on, I have a massive, uh, lump, uh, which is benign, but it, it's so big, uh, at the place where I had my lumpectomy, that it has to be taken out. And the second surgery, it has to be left open, seven inches left open by itself. And it took me almost a year to get it to grow by itself. Every alternate day, I had to go to the wound management. And I was so lucky at that time, I was flying in and out of KL in Kuching. And, um, Kuching was just starting their wound management center. So every other day I have to clean it up, you know? So I leave with that for a year until it just grow by itself. And with cancer, like Ranjit was saying, it's no ending. It can be something else, yeah? And, uh, the effect was osteoporosis. I was, I am osteopenia before diagnosed cancer. So after the, uh, you know, the, the five years, uh, therapy, the hormonal therapy, my bone just doesn't grow. And recently, I broke both legs. Okay? Now I have seven inches of titanium on my left and fourteen inches titanium in my right thigh bone. Okay? And, uh, like I said, all these challenges, we don't have, we don't have things that go beyond just looking at cancer. After cancer, these are the effects. And then, right now, I can't take any of the calcium tablet anymore, it doesn't work on me. I have to be jabbed every day, just like diabetic, uh, patient, but it's for bone growing. Okay? So, and because, uh, of course, uh, the government will not supply that for the time being because they did request, but it takes some time, so I have to purchase it myself. Okay, I can afford to pay, but what about the?
About the rest?
You see? So these are things that, you know, beyond, beyond, beyond cancer, you know? So it's like cancer is not just there, it's more than that. Yeah? So, uh, and, uh, of course, uh, with, with us, Scan also, we have, uh, put up a paper for the government, for the cabinet, for the B forty-two, or less helping, uh, cancer patient to get pre-medical, uh, or even less, uh, payment. Because if you're not a government person, if you're not a government person, you still pay for your chemo and your radiotherapy. And if you are petty planters and you have seven children, you'd rather use that money to feed your children and let your wife die.
Yeah.
Cancer, for example, you know?
Yeah.
These are things that, uh, don't talk about wish list, uh, Ranjit and I probably have so long days.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I, I can't imagine. I think, you know, what you've shared is very powerful. Uh, it's very important for people to understand the, um, actual day-to-day living, the fact that it doesn't just end after the cancer, you know, if you're in remission, but it's a lifelong process. Uh, we, we often talk, they talk about social safety nets as a cradle-to-grave concept. Well, it's, it's like that with everything, you know? And I think even as we look at this, I'm struck, um, by what you said earlier. You mentioned, you know, in another, in another word, the proof of the pudding is in eating, right? So until you see things in black and white, it's going to be from RMK to RMK. And that's why, um, such demands, I mean, awareness has to be, has to be felt and has to be made together jointly. I, um, wanted to pivot a little bit as well because, yes, uh, the, the, we're in dire need of actual buildings, actual services to manage the needs of the patients. But, uh, Prof. Taisha also mentioned the need of, uh, you know, going back to what Ranjit, uh, uh, mentioned earlier, human resource planning. Yeah, clear-cut human resource planning. It has to be well-integrated and the fact that, um, you must have a clear career pathway for psychology, psychos-oncologists, yeah, psycho-oncologists that will, you know, will give them the encouragement. I mean, I, I think, uh, if you want, uh, doctors and oncologists to speak far more effectively, you know, Datin Dayang, when you, when you speak, people, it really hits you and you know that change and, and things have to be done immediately. But of course, you want this to percolate, you want this to be replicated from every person who's dealing in the world of cancer and, and, and beyond that. But I think the pathway for our human resource is something that we have to start planning now because you only see the fruits of our labor or planning, you know, years down the line. I, I also wanted to maybe ask not just the, the two of you, but just your thoughts because, um, from, from the perspective of, of, uh, affordable diagnostics and therapeutics, one of the key, uh, things that we have to do beyond COVID, because it's not talk about creating COVID vaccines. I mean, and of course, it's important, but I think, you know, I, I also met some doctors, I will not say which state. They're like, oh, Jabatan, Kusyata Polite, I was like, oh, if we want to talk about other diseases as well because there are also so many patients, uh, that are in need. So they, they feel, yeah, they feel this, this gap that needs to be filled. But I think we also want to talk about the importance of, uh, clinical, uh, cancer trials. Uh, if in that you look at the booklet, uh, that was produced by Galen, they talk about human papillomavirus, which is a cause for many cancers. And one of the key, uh, things that we have to look at very seriously is whether Malaysia is doing enough to encourage the ecosystem for more clinical trials, you know, for affordable, um, therapeutics. And I'd like to just, you know, get, um, some feedback. How easy is it in Malaysia to sort of be part of, of some of this, uh, drug trials? Um, how challenging has it been or we're not doing enough? So that we kind of understand where do we need to go from here in, in planning out this thirty-year plan that must involve beyond the building of hospitals?
I think.
Maybe Ranjit?
Yeah, I will, I will add in, uh, to say something here. Uh, on the aspect of manpower, YB, what I would like to explain here to everyone is one thing that we tend to face in Malaysia is that nurses are trained and then some of them are trained in a special area, like, let's say, in breast care. And then sometimes what happens is that this nurse gets promoted and gets into a different department. She loses all those, uh, uh, that, that knowledge and skills that she had cannot be replicated somewhere else because she's in a totally different department. So I'm going to start with nurses. Nurses need a ladder. They need to be going up the ladder in that particular specialty. So let's say if it is a specialty of a particular cancer, she should grow in that, do her masters, do her PhD as she's working. And she grows in that area so that you can have a cadre of nurses who are handling that area. And let me tell you, nurses are very good in communication. Their communication skills with patients are much better. So they have the time which they can spare with the patient and sit down with the patient, talk to the patient and find out if the patient really understood everything that the doctor said. And they can be the navigators for patients. And I think that that kind of cadre needs to be developed. And the same kind of thing can be developed in all other areas of the frontliners and healthcare professionals who are working with patients. I think we need that. I think, uh, I mean, you were not born at that time, but in the nineteen-sixties, when I was in primary school, I know you were born in UMMC, so I, I'm just talking about that. All right. I, I remember that in, in the hospital, you, you get a doctor, you get a medical officer. There was always a nurse who could speak another language with the doctor, who could actually speak to the patient and translate for the doctor and for the patient. And I think we've lost that. And this was for different languages. And I think that this can come back again. At the same time, you can also have, I'm again going to talk about manpower, but this is what we call informal manpower. Cancer survivors can be trained to support patients. They can support patients, they can navigate patients, not just their experience alone, but they need to be trained, certified and, and they need to be supervised. You cannot let them free because they may be having other ideas in their heads, which they need to relearn.
I mean, being human.
Yes, that's right. And, 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 um, when it comes to psycho-oncologists, I think this must have been like now fifteen years, Prof. Aisha would probably remember, we were wondering, when are we going to get psycho-oncologists to be in the next room next to the doctor who breaks the bad news? So that the doctor can send the patient there to vent out their feelings and express their concerns, their fears and their uncertainty, or rather, are they having in their head that I'm going to die next week? When I was diagnosed, I thought I was going to die. I asked the doctor, do I have a week, a month or a year? All right? Because I knew nothing at that time and most people come in knowing nothing. All right? You're going into a new world of cancer, you need to learn new words. The doctor told me mastectomy, which I didn't understand at all. You know, all those things a nurse could do with the patient. And you need them dedicated to a number of, so you need caseworkers. You, you nurses need to be caseworkers who work with a group of patients. And you can, we can actually grow, we will be so enriched. We are a multi-ethnic community, we are multiracial country, we have so many languages. We can enrich those languages and continue to have that in the government as well so that people can have access using the language they understand. I think that is very important. Datin Dayang had mentioned that, that a lot is lost in translation. And I think that, as I mentioned earlier, simple language, communication skills, very important in using simple language, which the patient understands and not, uh, which the doctor understands. So that's important. So peer support, peer navigation is another area where you can show the way to the new patient as well. Practical expects and tips on how to manage yourself after, during treatment? Where can you get a wig? Where can you get a bra, prosthesis? As how do you manage a colostomy bag? If a patient is Muslim and he has, he or she has a colostomy bag, how does she manage that to do her prayers? All of these are practical tips, which sometimes they just pick it up from friends from here and there. But we need something more formalized to be given to the patient so that the patient understands it. So these kind of, of, of manpower can be easily, easily brought together and create a cadre of different types of frontliners that we can have.
Thank you for that. I think it's true. One of the key problems, uh, I mean, affecting not just Malaysia, but many other countries is fragmentation. The fact that, uh, you know, different agencies are working in silos and then you have very low take-up rates for all the screening or all the services provided for. Um, and it also doesn't help, right? When you have naysayers or people who ask cat, so even those who are diagnosed as, uh, you know, having cancer, they don't want to go for further treatment, uh, because they feel, you know, it just sweep you under the carpet and, and things will be fine. So I, I think this requires, um, and I actually wanted to ask if Mr. Azro, if I can ask a question to Prof. Aisha so she can, uh, sort of expand further because I sense that to make sure all these different agencies and services are working better in tandem with one another, including the role of the nurse, you know, uh, aiding the doctor and then not just oncologist, you have a psycho-oncologist. All these things will perhaps have to begin from a model, seeing a pilot, a flowchart on how it actually works. And the intended recipient of the benefits, okay, sure, go ahead. The intended recipient is actually the patient. So, you know, a simple thing, I mean, I, I love UMMC, you know, but you know what you must know, PPM? It's like, it's a beautiful maze, right? Um, and I, I mean, at least I can, I can, you know, walk and run, find the different clinics. But can you imagine if you're a, a cancer patient in, in your late seventies and you have to go and line up? If you don't have someone there to bring you, where do you have to pay for your bill, so on so forth? So of course, uh, the, these are challenges, but we can perhaps look at the, um, the patient and his or her well-being from a particular flowchart, uh, as soon as they enter for that, you know, to get that diagnosis, to eventually for treatment. And of course, as I think I mentioned, post-cancer or, you know, just life after, uh, the cancer has, has come into remission. So, uh, you know, I like that both the role of nurses, a lifesaver for anyone giving birth and, um, a psycho-oncologist I mentioned here. Everyone is required, especially in an ecosystem where, where caregiving and, and treatment is provided. So Prof. Taisha, why don't you chime in? Why don't you come in and just give us your thoughts a little bit more on how to make a more integrated approach to, um, you know, to cancer treatment in Malaysia from your own experience? I, I usually speak to probably in Ling here, you know, um, so, uh, you know, that's why she has to force to, you know, she's, she was forced to appoint me because, uh, I'm always, you know, disturbing her as an ambassador. But yeah, Prof. Taisha, please share with us if you can unmute her.
Will disturb you some more. So essentially, I think the, the issue is every hospital has a different, um, environment. Every hospital has its challenges. And I think, uh, I think Prof. Namalash is in the crowd somewhere. She has published some studies on the quality of life of patients. So unfortunately, PPM is one of the hospitals that, um, our patients have poorer quality of life. Um, but, um, of course, we, in terms of breast cancer, I think our five-year, right, the five-year survival rates are quite good, but unfortunately, quality of life not so good. So there are some quality improvement projects that we're doing, uh, in our own hospital, which we call the journey, that means journey interactively with patients. Uh, and I think we have to, um, you know, um, we have to use what we have. So we have, uh, homegrown electronic medical records, we have, uh, digitized processes. So the plan is to get everyone together, um, because if, if you need a biopsy, if you need mammogram, if you need chemotherapy, it's very difficult for the patient to navigate. We do have breast cancers, um, that actually assist the patients, but, um, sometimes it's not enough. So we need to get something that is easy for the patient to, uh, to, to refer to. So the plan is to have something like an app that the patient can use to navigate our hospital, uh, appointments. And we are assigning, um, four numbers that they can communicate with our nurses directly. Um, so those are things that we, uh, slowly doing step by step. So right now, we are doing, using the quality improvement framework. We've got our hospital management to agree to this and we've got the support of the, um, IT department to help us, uh, put this into our, uh, electronic medical records. So it will be really helpful for the doctors. Because doctors, I think, I think from the, I, I, I'm not sure, but I think a lot of our patients are very thankful because our doctors are usually very kind doctors. They try to help to, uh, expedite the appointments. Um, so, but how do you do this systemically across the, all the sectors? So you, you heard from Mama Has earlier about how the Pink Ribbon Center is actually improving care in, uh, the Ministry of Health Hospitals. So that is actually very commendable. You can see that adherence rates are very high for treatment of, uh, breast cancer at the moment. So those are really good initiatives. Um, and I think like for PPM, we have our own breast cancers, um, but we need to help them, empower them to learn about how to provide psychosocial, um, support. What they do now is wonderful because they are our main logisticians. They help patients with, uh, post-op care, they help patients with their appointments. Um, but really, I think there's a long way to go. Maybe, you know, we should have more innovative ways of helping, um, people access psycho-oncology services. Because right now, um, there's just not enough people. We only have two. We only have two psychologists in our hospital. And, and there should be screening tools to screen for those who really need additional psychological support. So maybe what we should do is think about the whole continuum of care and look at what sort of resources available and a diagonal approach. Use existing people, social workers, untapped group of people to do counselling. So there are many things actually available to us. So one of the other projects that I'm doing right now, which we will be surveying for hospitals is really on survivorship care, covering survivorship as well as the extended period and understanding the health system. I think we can have all the civil societies coming to the, into, helping us. And I am very thankful VCWE, I think you've been helping us for the last few decades, really. But is the coverage hundred percent? You know, we have people being helped to do genetic counselling, testing and all that. But is the coverage hundred percent again? So I think it all goes primarily to be able to reach out this service. So you need to have improved coverage. So all these projects, I think, is still underway. We need to probably work together.
Thank you, Prof. I want to also ask your colleague, you mentioned in terms of the paper on quality of life of patients, the journey. Is that paper able to be disseminated to everybody? Because I think, I think the problem also is when we don't have sufficient support and, and sharing of such insights. You know, in Malaysia, you know, we have different ministries, of course. And I think at the end of the day, everyone can agree during this pandemic, the most important ministry, Ministry of Health, it should be sufficiently financed, supported. And again, it also has to be the bigger kind of having this Sauron-like power and quality, right? Because, because it has to be able to look at the different plugins and availability of service. You mentioned, of course, the app and, you know, it could be used, again, that's the Dian's point. It could be used in a, in a perfectly urban setting. But once you get into a rural setting, there has to be a manual kind of simplified version of which can assist them so that they know what to do. Because sometimes we need to, of course, expand digitalization, but in the meantime to, to meet the, the gaps. I, I wanted to also ask whether Datin Dayang, yeah, can share with us? You submitted to the state government in terms of your asks to provide a better picture. And I think at this juncture, it's important for us to equally look at all the necessary ecosystems. And as Prof Aisha mentioned, at the continuum whereby it is kind of the baseline measure of what is, what can be done to fit the needs of a rural setting. But also, you know, we can have add-ons because we're talking about a thirty-year plan. Prof Aisha, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold you on to that, you know, you can't run away. Ten years down the line, we're gonna check, are we doing things better? So that there's always something to look forward to because that's, again, the measurement of success in this country. It should be how our people are enjoying and have, having a better quality of life. So Datin Dayang, do you mind sharing those asks? Because I, I think a lot of us should also be aware, you know, and learn about what is needed from the context of Sarawak. And I'd like to just add one point before that in a response with her yes or no is how, you know, Malaysia is, you know, everywhere else, people can be territorial. And I think we do need to, you know, for example, I know PPM falls under Ministry of, of High Education. So in terms of the scheme of things, there'll be like Ministry of Health, Kunya Hospitals and then the Ministry of High Education Teaching Hospitals. And I think, like it or not, everybody should be given the same level of, of treatment and support based on needs. So it's the needs of the patient that should be supported. And I, I think maybe for PPM, a lot of the B forty, Kampung, Rinci, Tamal Meda segment are utilizing your services so that could explain some of the, the healthcare standards. But I think Dayang, could you, could you weigh in? Is it okay for us to learn more from the paper you submitted? And, you know, you can add on as well, based on what Prof Dr Aisha said, since we have ten, the last ten minutes to, to sort of discuss these issues.
Okay, actually, our paper was presented to YB Hajah Fatima, the Welfare Family and Community Minister, to be brought to cabinet, yeah? But at the moment, we do not have the answer yet because, you know, there's no cabinet meeting. And a lot of cabinet meeting is mostly done for COVID, which is the, the most important thing for the time being. But the reason why we put up this paper was that the Society for Diabatic People in Sarawak has successfully sent a proposal also. And they have been given the, the diabetic, the hemodialysis centers. They get from the government, the various low-income group people who can, who can't afford to do dialysis can go to the very center. As you know, in hospitals, there's the facilities is limited and there are so many people who are now needing the center. So they, they go to private sectors, but they, they are sponsored by the government. So with that, we put this paper up for the fact that we felt that there is a need for Sarawak to do the same for the B forty. But again, you see, we are not very hopeful because one, Sarawak is too, too, too big, yeah? And, and to look at it at which cut of point is a bit difficult as well. But nevertheless, we did put the paper up, looking at the various, the various things that things like the logistic delay presentation, you know. And like Dr Aisha did mention that, that to have the hospital takes not only the building, but you need to put people in there. So that's why we were saying that we wanted to have it at the underutilized heart center just to expand it while waiting because we know it takes a while, 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 you know.
True. And also some of the existing centers can also be upgraded in the meantime. You know, I was just in PAC, so we're looking at also some of the old machines and equipment that have been there for the last thirty years. So secondly, some of the upgrades, you know, can also be done in tandem with existing facilities.
Yes, because there are certain facilities you can share. You see, there are certain facilities you can share. So you don't just keep it for the heart center. So the, the, the cancer patient can also do that. We also put in the statistic to show to the, to the cabinet what presentation for the state of Sarawak. But again, it is a database, okay? It's a database. We have not really gone into, because it will take a lot of time, yeah? It's data based, based on the data that we collected in the hospital, yeah? And again, whatever we collected in the hospital is again, people who has come to present themselves. But again, oh, the out there is more than that. But from these data alone, you could see how difficult it is, let alone going out there. And the, the most, the, the concern here is not only they are presented, but they default us. They were diagnosed.
Yeah.
They go through two times chemo and then they disappear.
Yeah.
Yeah, they disappear.
Still harrowing a journey.
This, this, this journey is the one that we, we really, really want to bring back, you know? So we presented it more, not only that, we presented it in such a way that we look at the mileage that they have to come into town. You see, like those in the MU hospitals, you are looking at people around you. But we are here looking at people around Sarawak. So we, we had added on the cost of each transportation, not for one, but for two. And so it was quite a massive, massive presentation, which was done by Dr Adi Bali, who's our breast cancer surgeon, breast surgeon, yeah? And working with also other specialists in the hospital. Both Dr Adi Bali and Dr Chu are our medical advisors for scans. So these are the presentation that we had to put up with the government. And we, we yet to hear, we yet to hear.
Sure.
YB Fatima did mention that if we can do a hundred percent, we do, we probably able to look at it at various, various ways, you see. For example, I just, I was in Sibu and I went to visit a young boy who has NPC. And he's only twenty-two and he doesn't come into the category of my Salam because he's single. Because my Salam is somebody who's married. And his parents are selling crepe pisang. So can you imagine?
How much can you make?
I'm, I'm buying a lot of crepe and giving away. Every time when I see them, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But you see, we, we are also fortunate, we have lots of, well, Scan has been helping. Mokna has been helping, you know, a lot of other NGOs are helping. But then again, a lot of us are also like you, like we mentioned, we are, most of us are working in, you know, silo. We sometimes, he ended up with forty-four bot cans of Ensure because everybody is giving. So because we, we not, you know, united in that sense, you know? So if we could all come together and be, be able to work together, it, it would be just fantastic, you know?
Last two minutes, but yeah, please.
Scan, for example, we have come up with a book, well, I, I think you, you can see there, which is if you have can, if you have cancer, what now? We have presented it in English and we also have in Bahasa, in Mandarin. And now it's a translation in Iban.
Well.
So, yeah, we, it's a simple read because they can take it away so that they can, you know, help in that way. We try as much as possible to reach out. And before I finish, I would like to say thank you also to Yayasan Budipanyayang, Puan Nori and also Datilila introduced me to their lymphedema massage when I was in Putrajaya. I come in every other week, you know? I can feel now my arms are getting bigger because there's only one therapist in Kuching for the whole of Sarawak, you see? So these are things that after, after cancer, these are things that we want to see more, especially us over here, you know?
I'll, I'll tell that to Ilah as well because she was telling me that program actually was planned out to make sure there's a nationwide support for that particular service, so.
Yes, they have trained one, but that's all, you know? It was expensive to, to train everybody, very expensive, yeah? But I, I felt guilty to, to see the one in here because I know there are those that need it more than me, you know? So, but then.
Yeah, you need it too, yeah.
Yes, everybody, I mean, if we have it in every center, at least just like Mary, Kuching, Sibu. You imagine people from all over come down to Kuching.
Yeah, can benefit immensely.
For that benefit, you know? So we in Sarawak is far, far behind, you know, from everybody else.
Yes, thank you so much, Datin Dayang. I mean, I'm so sorry, I've, I've been asked to, to close the session. But thank you for really touching our hearts because it's really such a compelling journey. Ranjit, you know, I can recognize you as, as a former UMMC, you know, stalwart from anywhere, from a mile away. But I think because of this, it really is so crucial to have a repository of data that is synergized. We cannot remain fragmented and, you know, continue to work and operate in silos because we just don't have time. We don't have enough money, we don't have enough resources. And we're gonna face, you know, more challenges as, as the years progress. So with that, I hope Galen Center can also help coalesce and collate all the brilliant suggestions today. I wrote most of it here, but oh yes, proper Dr Naisha also add on. A lymphedema training can be done, okay? Thank you, Prof Dr Naisha, always, you know, adding on. But again, thank you very much for, to Galen Center for doing this. It's been very enriching, illuminating and I apologize to everybody who, you know, anyone who hasn't had a chance to, to ask questions. We must humanize cancer care, yeah, back at you Ranjit. And we must make sure that everybody utilizes empathy in the way that we, we deal with this collective problem. So cradle to grave, you know, life is always going to be very challenging, so we might as well do it better together. Thank you very much, Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and, and see you guys again with a better future. Remember, we have a thirty-year promise, minimum, you can't run away, so, yes.
Thank you so much, YB Nouriza. Thank you to all the speakers, including the plus one there, Prof Dr Aisha. I must say that YB, you claim that you haven't chaired in a while, but it seems like it's like riding a bike and with your eye of Sauron even, suggestion there, I totally love it. Some of the questions and issues that were raised in this session make excellent segues into the next session, which is actually about budget twenty twenty-two and where cancer care urgently needs. And I'm great, grateful that this has been a good warm-up session and focusing on survivorship. And that's where the focus should really be. And having us to close this session with basically humanizing cancer care, I, I honestly couldn't have planned it better. Well, well said, well said. At this point of time, if I could ask us all to do the needful, which is to smile at the camera and I'll take a snapshot of everyone, yeah? Well done. One more.
This is only a Malaysian tradition, not a Zoom tradition.
Well, thank you so much again, YB. I know you have a busy schedule ahead in this weekend, so thank you. Go ahead, Ranjit.
I was just thinking, Azro, that humanizing cancer case is what the bottom line I would like to use. That is why I've introduced that. I think humanizing health, cancer care would actually put the nail on because Datin Dayang and I, between the two of us, we have plenty of titanium in our system.
Okay, well, again, so thank you very much, Ranjit, for those last words. And thank you very much to all of you for participating in this session.